At this time, call the Thursday, February 18th, 2021, meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Chester?
Here.
Mr. Cho is excused. Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Roche?
Here.
Ms. Yuktman is not here. Mr. Warren Brown?
Here.
And Mr. Welch?
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
At this time, then, undertake approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. As have all board members had a chance to review those. If so, I would entertain a motion.
A move that we approve the minutes from the January 20th, 2021, meeting as drafted.
It's been moved. We have a second for that.
I second.
All right. All in favor of the approval of the minutes?
Harvey, we need to do a roll call.
Oh, that's right, yeah. You have a roll call, please.
Okay, just for our records, I think I heard two seconds at the same time. Does anybody want?
I think Adam had it first.
Okay, Adam. Adam is first on the second. Gotcha. Okay. All right, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Mr. Warren Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Chester?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Are there any communications?
There were two letters of public input, but they were received prior to the meeting and included in your packet.
All right. You do not have any continued public hearings, correct?
That's correct.
All right, this time, then, we'll move to new public hearings. First, we call ZBA 2020-major-09. A request by Gary Applestadt to allow a garage to encroach 11 feet into a required 15-foot front yard at 213 West Illinois Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. This is a request by Gary Applestadt for a major variance to allow the applicant to rebuild his garage four feet from the property line in a required front yard at 213 West Illinois Street. Staff received two letters of public input. Both were in favor of the major variance, and they were included in your packet. And staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals make a recommendation to city council to approve the request. This is a location map of the property. The property is in the northeastern portion of the West Urbana neighborhood. The applicant has owned the property since 2014. The existing garage encroaches into the required front yard along Cedar Street four feet from the west property line and has been on the property for over 100 years. It is deteriorating and needs to be replaced. This is the zoning map. The property is owned R2 Single Family Residential and is surrounded by R2 zoning. It is a corner lot with 15-foot required front yards on both Illinois and Cedar Street. Nearby are single-family residences, duplexes, and small apartment buildings. This is a site photo of the garage looking northeast. Other requests is for a major variance to allow the garage to be rebuilt in a required front yard four feet from the property line. The narrow lot width creates a practical difficulty in rebuilding the garage 15 feet from the property line. The home also encroaches into the required front yard and is only eight feet from the property line. And there is also a garden in the rear yard that would need to be removed if the garage were to be built further east. This is looking due east down the alleyway. To summarize, staff found that the application meets the requirements for requested variance. The lot was plotted to be smaller and more narrow than what is now required by the zoning ordinance. The lot size and configuration create a practical difficulty in rebuilding the garage 15 feet from the property line. The existing garage has been on the property for over 100 years, where it has not caused issues for the property owner or the adjacent properties, and the new garage will be rebuilt in generally the same location. This is the garden, as forementioned. The variance represents generally the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements as the garage would be rebuilt as far from the west property line as possible, but it would still be in a required front yard. Staff recommends, or I'm sorry, the zoning board of appeals has the following options on the requested major variance. Forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve the variance as requested. Forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions or deny the variance. Staff recommends approval of the requested major variance as detailed in the staff report, and the applicant is here to answer any questions as well.
Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Joanne?
My question is about, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is about safety. And the fact that it's four feet from the sidewalk, and I don't see how there's any way you can be in that garage and see if anybody is coming down that sidewalk. And so, I mean, I don't have any problem with four feet of the garage doors on the alley. But you're asking. And I, he's asking to build a 24-by-24-foot garage, which is a lot bigger than 20 by 20. But I cannot support this because I don't think it's safe. Now, when you have a door, you just can't be inside that garage and see if anybody is walking down the sidewalk or riding a bicycle down the sidewalk. You just, you have no visibility. And I don't, I don't understand why the staff didn't take that into consideration.
I can speak on behalf of staff on that a little bit. I think we did take this into consideration in a few aspects. The first being that the garage has been on the property for over 100 years, and there haven't been any issues, at least from the applicant's perspective or from a property maintenance or nuisance complaint or reported violations perspective. I think that speaks to the history of the garage in that location. I have not personally pulled a car out of that garage, and maybe the applicant could speak a little bit more about that himself. But I think the fact that it has existed there for 100 years and would be rebuilt in that location speaks a little bit to its functionality.
Um, if you were to. If you were to build a new garage there, brand new, I suppose you won't have to be 18 inches from the property line. My, plus the gutters or the eaves, whatever. But I just don't think it's safe. I don't think there's any way that it's safe. You know, the length of a car is how, is it 15 feet, 13 feet? I don't know what a car is. Do you know what a car is? But you just, you just can't see. I just don't see there's any way you can see, and therefore, I don't think it's safe. And the fact that it's been there 100 years or more doesn't make any difference. You know, there is. I just, as far as safety goes, I just don't think it's safe. I don't, I don't see why it can't be built going out onto the alley. You know, I don't know how wide the alleys are. They're usually 12 feet, 15 feet? I don't know. I think they're probably at least 12. I don't know what that one is. I didn't see the dimensions on the map. I'd look at a different map.
It's a pretty narrow alley. I mean, it's a tight fit if you have two cars coming down the alley at the same time. Generally, you have to pull one over.
Well, cars are wide.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
They're longer than they are wide, though.
They're definitely longer than they are wide.
So.
You have just because it's a problem, you could move the garage further north. But if you're building a 24-foot garage, that's, you know, quite big. I just don't think it's safe to have it that close to a sidewalk without visibility, and I just can't support it because of that. There must be other ways to do this. You know, gardens are wonderful, but the garden may not be there with, this is a rental property, it may not be there with the next tenant. I gave up my garden once for a garage. I wasn't happy about it, but you know, the gardens, you know, it is a rental property.
No, I believe the garden is maintained by the owner. Cat, can you bring back up the visual of the lot and where the garage is so we can see that again?
Sure. On the map, is that easier or a photo?
Whichever one's going to give us a sense of what's to the north and what's to the east.
I am looking at Google Earth, and you can at least see, you know. Across the street, there's another garage that's also facing the same road, but it has, you know, it's further than four feet from the sidewalk.
Yeah, that garage at least has, close to a car lane.
Yeah. Well, I guess we can look at this, at this car that's in there. If you pulled out that four feet, I don't think the driver can see. On one side, maybe the other side.
The problem is unless you move the garage further to the north, there's no way to get in and out at the alley, because then you'd be backing into the parking lot of the house to the east. And that's a gravel parking pad right there that can fit, thank you, that can fit two cars.
And that's something we actually, I don't know if I muted. That's actually something we discussed from a staff perspective, and Gary had expressed concern about turn radius backing out of the garage into a narrow alley. So I think definitely from his perspective, it would be easier to back out onto Cedar Street. But I understand the pedestrian concern.
Yeah.
Charles, did you have a question, Charles?
So the garage that's being built is larger than the garage is there right now? Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't have the site plan in front of me, but I think the existing garage is 20 by 24, and the new garage will be 24 by 24. Is that correct?
Is that new since last month?
No, no.
Okay.
So the backside of that garage, the east side of that garage has like a little outlet for like a little shed portion built on. Is it more or less kind of squaring off where that is?
I think the applicant may be able to answer that better than I can. I'm not sure exactly what the plans for rebuilding are.
Yes, Charles.
So if we move this garage to the east into the garden, we could actually make it totally legal, or we could move it five feet or three feet, just to give it enough room for more visibility? Is that a possibility?
The variance is for an 11-foot encroachment. So it would have, for it to be totally legal without variance, it would have to be moved 11 feet further east.
How big is the garden?
That's a great question.
But we could do something like, instead of 11 feet, we could make it say six feet, get another five feet there. Potentially.
Yeah.
Essentially, aren't we just, or can we add a condition like that, or are we just approving or denying the 11?
Major variances, to the best of my knowledge, can have conditions. I don't know if we could change the measurement, Kevin?
You can, yeah, you can, you can always do a lesser variance than is requested, but you can't do a greater variance than was advertised.
Thanks.
Are there any more questions for staff?
I do have one question, if that's all right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are there any, I don't know, parameters about how close a garage is to an alleyway that we need to be aware of? In terms of turn radius and all of that?
I think that would typically be defaulted to public works. From a zoning ordinance perspective, if this didn't need a variance, it would need to be built 18 inches from that rear property line.
Okay.
I guess one of the concerns I have is if we are, like, are we, are we at the point where we're deciding that if something is out of conformity and they want to rebuild it, then they don't get to? Because I can think of several, I can think of a few other garages in the neighborhood that are maybe perhaps as close. There's one half a block away from me where I'm sitting right now that's that close to a street. And it's still there. And it's probably going to be there for a long time, because it's a relatively new build. I don't know.
I mean, there's plenty of things that are, you know, not in conformance. But you know, this is the case that's here before us tonight, and there's, you know, as the rebuilding, this is the time to make that decision. I don't have a position either way at this moment. You know, I'm eager to hear from the applicant, but.
Yes, yes, Joanne.
Isn't there, I remember something about if you want to rebuild, if you want to rebuild something that is out of conformity, and you just have to leave, you can fix it, but you have to leave part of it still up?
Yeah, there are definitely some caveats with that. Off the top of my head, like in existing nonconformity, if it burned down more than 50%, you couldn't reinstate that nonconformity. But I think less than 50% damage, it could be restored to its full extent.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
I don't know what happened to this thing. I can't see you anymore.
We can hear you.
Yeah, you know, I just remember stories about, you know, if you leave somebody walls up and you, but he wants to have a bigger garage, so that's totally different than wanting to keep this one and just fix it. Push it back and make it not a parallelogram. Yeah, I just, I think it's a safety issue, being so close to the sidewalk, and whether it's been there for 100 years doesn't really matter. I mean, I think that there are ways you can solve it. You know, make it safer. You know, either moving it, have a better turning radius, or moving it further back so the car, the driver can see, have visibility.
I do want to point out that we run all of our variance cases and other cases by folks in public works, so by our traffic engineers to, you know, to make sure that they don't have any safety concerns. They didn't express any concern about the location where it's at. So just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
I personally don't think that is a big deal, because if you just back out of it at one mile an hour, you can look, probably get enough of a vision while you're backing out slowly enough to see. I used to live next to that property, so I've seen that garage used a lot. But that being said, I do understand the idea that if this is being rebuilt to a larger footprint than it was before, that we should look at ways to have it better in conformity. So I can see it both ways.
At this time, I feel that unless there are other questions for staff, that we should hear from the applicant. Mr. Applestadt, are you still there? You're muted, sir. There you go. Are you there, Mr.? All right. First, I have to swear you in.
Okay.
Do you swear affirm that any testimony you give before the board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Well, thank you for letting me enter the conversation. I've heard several good points on both sides. There are four things that I would like to address. One of the members just recently mentioned that the safety issue is mitigated by the use of the current structure. We've owned the property since 2014. Some tenants have vehicles, some tenants don't. All of the tenants have been very aware of the proximity of the garage to the sidewalk and street, and there have been no complaints or incidences of threatening people's harm. Another point is the caveat of how you can replace a out-of-conformity structure in Urbana. It is true that you can replace one wall at a time on a nonconforming structure, and by the time you're done, you've replaced everything. But since you're doing it one wall at a time, it still is allowed under the Urbana regulations currently in effect. A third point is the location from, or the size of the structure. The reason we're making it would be proposing a larger structure is to make it even more convenient for the person pulling out of the structure onto Cedar to be aware of what's happening on the sidewalk and the street. So the 24-by-24-foot structure would be basically going to the end of that little shed on the east side of the structure to the current west line of the garage, and then extending four more feet into the yard of that property. The other change we'd be making is the location of the structure by moving it further north so that it's two foot away from the alley. The alley is a very narrow alley. It's confined with a power pole that's in the middle of the backside of the property that's south of our house. When Kat was pursuing the information on our behalf, she brought back the point that someone mentioned, could it be opening onto the alley? But there's no way to turn a vehicle from the narrowness of the alley into the structure and get it lined up properly with a 24-foot garage. That way, we'd need the turning radius coming off of Cedar Street into the structure in order to have that turning radius to get into the garage. So there haven't, it's been there for 100 years. There hasn't been a problem. The tenants sometimes don't have cars. The garden is a feature that we want to maintain for the property. I primarily, as the owner, maintain the property when tenants don't use the garden. It's very productive. It adds vegetable produce to the neighborhood that they get shared. And I think with the research that's been done by the zoning board or zoning commission of the planners, it's been amply shown that this is a reasonable variance request that should be approved. And I'll defer to questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question. I know that there's a small, I'm looking at the image of the garage right now. There's a couple of small windows, only one of which is actually glass on that that southward-facing wall of the garage. Do you have any intention to put windows in the garage when it's rebuilt?
Yes. On both sides.
Okay.
Basically, the new garage would be two foot further north than it currently is, but it would maintain the west face of line. It would go four foot further into the yard of the structure, and then it would be moving, the east wall would be to the end of that little shed that's currently there. And there would be a person door leading up the sidewalk to the house. There would be garage doors that would face Cedar Street and windows on the north and south sides of the structure. It would be built in the same style as that structure so that we maintain the integrity of the appearance of the neighborhood.
Do you have a question, Charles? Did you have a question, Charles?
Yeah, yeah, I guess so. So could you tell, do you know how many feet are between the back of the garage currently and the property line on the east side where you're, so I guess I'm asking, how big is that garden?
Well, there's between the shed and the east property line, there's maybe only 10 feet.
So if I'm looking at these diagrams, your garden is maybe only, would you say, six feet wide or something like that?
Well, the garden runs between a sidewalk to the property boundary, and it's more like 14 feet or 16 feet.
That's 16 feet north-south, right?
Yeah, I was looking at the.
15-foot east-west.
Okay.
The north-south would be longer because the garage is, the garage is 20, 20 feet. There's probably another 15 feet, so the garden north-south is probably pushing 30 foot or a little bit more.
Right.
Are there other questions for the applicant?
I'm waiting for questions. I'm waiting for the questions from the people who thought there might be an objection.
Well, we'll get to that. Are there any more questions from any members, a member of the board to the applicant? Yes, Joanne?
Did you consider making, moving the garage further to the east and encroaching on the garden a few feet to give it more visibility to put, when you're pulling out of the garage?
Well, with the, with the dimension of the replacement garage, it would already be encroaching toward the garden. So the shed would be, well, it would be demolished, but the new garage would be coming up to that position of the shed so that the garden is preserved.
So, but would you consider reducing the width of the garden? So there would be more space?
Well, I don't know if you've seen the property. There's a perennial planting of raspberry bushes, but if it got pushed further east, east, then those would be destroyed. There's only maybe eight to 10 feet between the end of the shed and the east property line. And I don't know what the setback is from a property line between properties. But again, the fact that the garage has been in that position for so long without an issue, and that exists in Urbana in many places, it seems like allowing it to be approved for a zoning variance at this point is warranted. The other option that we would have, if that is not the case, then rebuilding it one wall at a time, keeping it on its current footprint and going in as a way of having a structure that's, I mean, if you've seen the structure, you can see it needs to be replaced. It's tilting in all these three directions.
Yes, Charles.
So the new dimension of the garage that you're changing is the depth, the east to west distance? Is that correct?
Both directions. So right now, it's 20 by 20.
Yeah.
We would shift it two foot to the north and have it 24 by 24. We would shift it two foot to the north and have it 24 by 24.
You're going to shift it two feet to the north.
And have the new dimension be 24 by 24.
So you're taking up, you're going to be taking up four more feet to the east and six more feet to the north. That'd be right? Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Do we have anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of the the petition? At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to be heard in opposition to the petition? Hearing no, hearing no comments either way. Does City Council have any further comments based on the questions from the board to the applicant and the responses? Nothing further? Any additional questions or comments from, from anyone on the board? Hearing none. Then I believe we're at the point now where for call for the question.
I'll, I'll make a motion and we can discuss it and see if it needs to be modified, I guess. I move that we approve this case ZBA 2021, major 01.
Wrong number, Adam.
Sorry. I had my wrong tab up. Let me look which browser I'm on. Um, oh, what number is this?
2020-major-09.
09, thank you. Okay, I move that we approve 20, the motion, with, with the condition that it generally conforms to the plans outlined in the packet and that it also includes, and that the prop, the garage shall be built with a large window on the east-facing wall that can, that's able to allow drivers in the garage to see pedestrians. Is that fair?
Wouldn't that be the north-facing wall?
Facing wall, thank you. Sorry, once I had the wrong tab, I just, that threw everything off. So, yeah.
All right, for the purposes of the recording, you want to, want to give it one more try?
I will give it one more try. I'm sorry. Okay, so scratch what I said before. I move that we forward the case to City Council with the recommendation to approve the variance with the following terms and conditions. The building shall generally conform to the exhibits A, to the exhibits contained within the packet presented by staff, and that the north wall shall contain a window and allowing for visi- visual reference by the driver of the cars.
It's been so moved. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Do we have any additional discussion?
I have a question. Why the north side and not the south side?
I thought of that as soon as I said it, and I'll, I'll offer a friendly amendment to say north and south walls. How's that?
All right, it's been amended. We have a second now to the amended motion.
Yeah, I'll second it again.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Yes, Charles?
I just discussing this amendment.
Yes.
You, how do you, how do you visualize a person in a car looking through a window in the wall to see the people looking over the other car that's in the garage? I, I'm missing the whole point on this window part.
Cars have windows too.
Yes, but if I mean, let's, let's just forget the pedestrian. Let's go with a bicycle. You could look and look the other way, and now you got a bicycle coming by. So to me, the windows have nothing to do with that because you have to clear the other car that's in the garage to get out.
I do feel like it's tricky to ensure visibility for the location you want it or need it. I, I'm not entirely sure how effective this is, and if it is, it, you know, if we add it in this way, is this a requirement or a recommendation? I guess I'm, I'm not fully familiar with the terms and conditions we can add or kind of what effect they have.
I have about a, maybe, I don't know, 35-foot driveway. You come down to the end of the driveway and there's there's bushes and trees that you can't see what's coming from the, the north. You know, it's blind. You have to pull up very slowly to that sidewalk to look and see if anybody's coming. And, and these are situations all over town.
Yeah.
I just, I don't see where putting a condition that you need to put windows in there. You know, a large window, that's just very vague to me, and it seems to me that you know, that's really not necessary.
I have to say, I, I'm not thrilled about it being so close to the sidewalk. I do wish they could enter off the alley, but, you know, I understand the limitations of just the geometry in that location. And given that there haven't been any complaints or safety issues, I feel like it's hard to justify adding, you know, additional conditions or denying the request. So I would be in favor of approving it kind of as is. But I, I mean, I, I understand the effort to try and add some sort of additional visibility, but it feels really tricky.
Yes, Joanne.
I, you know, it seems to me that, you know, you see fences all around town on people's property where they want to really go up to the sidewalk and have it, you know, still be a six-foot fence, but they can't. They have to slice it off so that there's visibility. And so I wonder if a structure, this, it would, you could apply that to a structure, those rules to a structure.
I guess I, in an ideal world, we would like to see this garage in a different position on the lot, but I, I am also of the opinion that this garage is probably built in about the best place they can figure it out for the lot without taking up the rest of the yard, quite frankly. We, and there is precedent that it's there, and people know it as a feature of the neighborhood. And I, I think that the applicant has made a reasonable case that allowing the garage to be slightly bigger is actually adding a little bit to the safety of it by allowing for more maneuverability instead of it just being just right there.
Joanne, I do get your point about fences, and I, I don't know what, you know, what restrictions specifically you're talking about. My sense is that maybe those are specific to intersections. I'm not sure about that. I did try to check.
I don't think so. I think it's, even the middle of the block, I don't think you can put your six-foot fence all the way up to the sidewalk.
Right, I, yeah, I mean, I mean, I get what you're saying with that. I think that's maybe true. I, I just wanted to add, I did try to check the access guidelines or access management guidelines for the region. Because there are some parameters about driveways, but they're pretty specific to intersection proximity, and they are also pretty minimal when it comes to a road that has this low of traffic. So I, I would just point that out. I mean, on a roadway that has low traffic doesn't mean it has low pedestrian traffic necessarily, but I just thought I'd point that out, that I couldn't really find any other reasons that, that this should be reconsidered.
I just think it makes common sense that you just would be able to know. When you're building a new structure, the fact that the structure's been there, or there are other structures that are built like it, doesn't mean that you would want to be putting up new structures where somebody didn't have visibility to see people walking on the sidewalk. And, you know, you can turn your head one way and it turn your head the other way, and there's always somebody that drives up or walks up. I just. You're putting up a new structure.
I, I think the decision here isn't whether isn't that the structure's going to go away. It's just that if we, if we say that he can't build a a, a new structure in the place, he'll just be repairing the old structure. And the old structure is in need of either repair or replacement, and have, allowing replacement would be of benefit to the community.
Well, I don't agree with that if it's close to the sidewalk. Because just because, you know, it's, I just think it's a hazard.
I believe it probably is, but ironically, with the garage being that close, theoretically, I guess, or even practically, you can't generate very much speed coming out in that short a distance. So I think that makes the situation a little bit more tolerable, tolerable. I know that at my home, we have a hedge that goes all the way to the sidewalk, and it's hard to see to the right. Now, to the left, there's no problem. And you're backing out from our garage down to the sidewalk a lot further than this. And so
You should cut your hedge.
We probably should. But the point being is, I don't believe that the vehicles would be able to generate that much speed to make it a truly hazardous situation.
Well, if you knock somebody over and they hit their head.
True enough.
At a slow speed, it doesn't take much.
No, it, it doesn't take much, and there's no guarantee.
No, there's no guarantee that it'll hap, you know, that it'll happen, but.
But it won't happen. But as I said, I, I think actually in, in a kind of strange way, the entry, entrance, exit to the garage being as close to the sidewalk may mitigate the situation a little bit. But you're right, it, it, you can certainly knock somebody over at a very, very slow speed. I, I agree. All right. Any other comments? Now, I heard that Ashley, who seconded the motion with the conditions now believes that those conditions are no longer necessary. Is that correct, Ashley?
I mean, I personally probably wouldn't include them. But I did second it because I, or seconded it, so we can get to discussion.
If allowed, withdraw my motion and allow someone else to make one.
All right, that's what I was getting at. So the motion that was on the table now is being withdrawn. Is there a, a, a new motion or an additional motion to be made?
Sure. I will move that we forward case number ZBA 2020 MAJ-09 to the City Council with the recommendation to approve the variance as requested based on the findings outlined in the memo.
Right. There's a move, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more comments on motion as being proposed? Yes, Charles?
I have one question. Is, is there a site plan in the, in the digital presentation?
In the digital, no. In the packet, yes. But I can pull up a copy if you'd like to see.
I think what Charles is getting at is that we should amend this to say, add the condition that that this generally conforms to the site plan included in the packet. Is that what you're getting at, Charles?
Well, the staff is kind enough to provide me with the written part of this, so I don't have to look at the digital part. And I don't have a site plan in what I got. So that's why I'm trying to.
I don't know if it's a site plan per se. It's just like a colored box on the aerial image that I see.
Right, but there's, there's nowhere in here that indicates to me that the garage is 24 by 24.
Oh, yeah, it says. I mean, it doesn't say it on the image, maybe, but it does say it in the text.
I see it on the page just below Exhibit C. I guess it's the second page of Exhibit C then?
Yeah, it should be just Exhibit C. So there should be two, there might be three maps with this one. A location, a zoning, and then a future land use. And then there should be a site plan showing. It is actually Exhibit D. So there are three maps and then a garage plan view is what the top of the sheet says.
Those itty-bitty things.
So does this?
As long as that's in there, I'm happy with it, if that's that.
So, excuse me, sorry. Do I just amend it to say and conforms to the site plan included in the packet?
Yeah.
I think it's already included in the packet, if, if that's what that was, so.
I, I don't believe any additional amendment be necessary, as you said, conforming to what has been presented by the staff, so. All right, it's been moved and I believe seconded. So I think we're ready now to call this for a vote.
Okay, Mr. Warmbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
No.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Roche?
Yes.
That passes by the necessary majority for a major variance request and will now be forwarded on to the City Council for their consideration at their next meeting of
March 8.
March 8. Thank you, Mr. Apps, Appfelstadt. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, then, I will call for hearing ZBA 2021 major-01, a request by Deborah Berthold for a major variance to allow a garage roof overhang to extend six inches into the 18-inch required setback from the south property line at 1006 South Wabash Avenue in the R3 single and two-family residential zoning district. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. All right, so this is a request by Deborah Berthold for a major variance to allow a garage roof overhang to extend six inches into the required 18-inch setback from the south property line at 1,006 South Wabash Avenue. Staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals make a recommendation to City Council to approve the request, and no public
And no public input was received on this case. Um, this is a location map of the property. The property is in the Fairlon Park neighborhood, south of Washington Street and west of Philo Road. The applicant has owned the property since 2005. The existing garage roof encroaches six inches into the required 18 inch setback, 12 inches from the south property line and has been on the property for over 50 years. Uh, the roof of the new garage would also encroach six inches into the setback and the garage wall will be 22 inches from the property line. The new garage will be built larger to include a workshop, which will be used to make stained glass and mosaics. This is a zoning map. Um, the property is zoned R3 single and two-family residential and is surrounded by R3 zoning. The lot is 50 feet wide and 107 and a half feet deep with an area of, uh, 5,225 square feet. Uh, nearby our single family residences and Wiley School to the south. Um, this is the home and the garage. Uh, the request is for a major variance to allow the garage to be rebuilt 12 inches from the side property line. Uh, the narrow lot width creates a practical difficulty in rebuilding the garage 18 inches from the property line. And there's a tree in the rear yard that prohibits the garage from being built further north and east. The garage would be rebuilt longer to include a workspace, but the width would remain the same as the existing garage. Uh, the neighboring garage also encroaches into the required 18 inch setback and is 17 inches from the property line. Per building code, the exterior wall of the new garage would be required to be one hour fire resistant rated. Here's a close up of the two garages. To summarize, staff found that the application meets the requirements for the requested variance. The lot was planted to be smaller and more narrow than what it's now required um, by the zoning ordinance. The lot size and location of the house and tree in the backyard create a practical difficulty in rebuilding the garage 18 inches from the property line. The existing garage has been on the property for over 50 years and the new garage would be rebuilt in the same location. Detached garages and side yards are common in the neighborhood and from the street, the garage will look essentially the same as it does now. So this is a site plan showing the existing dimensions of the two garages and where they would be rebuilt as well, or where it would be rebuilt. Um, there have been no nuisance complaints at 1,006 South Wabash Avenue since the applicant purchased the property. The, the added workspace would be used for making stained glass and mosaics, which should not generate noise or cause a nuisance to the neighbor. Um, additionally, the exterior walls of the new garage would be one hour fire resistance rated, which would help reduce any danger of fire to the adjacent garage. Um, this is us, an aerial site plan, so you can see where the garage has been lengthened. Uh, it will maintain its width and the tree on the site is, um, I don't know if you can see my cursor, it's to the right of where the garage will be rebuilt in that back corner. Uh, the zoning board of appeals has the following options on the requested variance. Forward the case to City Council with a recommendation to approve variance as requested. Forward the case to City Council with a recommendation to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions or deny the variance request. Staff recommends approval of the requested variance, um, as detailed in the staff report and the applicant has tuned in remotely to answer any questions as well. And I can take any questions for staff.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none. Is the applicant present on phone?
She's in the attendees, uh, and just raised her hand.
So what would that be, City of Urbana? What do I click on? I, I see now, all right. Ms. Berthold, can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you have, um, uh, comments you wish to address to the board?
No.
Are there questions for the applicant? Cause if not, I won't swear in if there aren't any questions. Are there questions for her? Hearing no questions, then Ms., uh, Berthold, we don't need to swear you in. All right, um, are there, is there anyone present who wishes to be heard in favor of the petition, petitioner? Anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Hearing, um, no, uh, comments from either side. I believe this case is also now ready for, um, a question to be called. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
To approve ZBA case 2021 major dash oh one. And send it to the City Council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional comments from any member of the, of the board? Hearing none, then I believe we are ready to have the question called.
Hey, Mr. Roosh?
Yes.
Mr. Warmbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
And Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
That, um, motion is approved by the necessary majority, approved unanimously to be forwarded on to the City Council for their consideration at their meeting of?
That one is also on March 8th.
March 8th. Thank you, Ms. Berthold. Any old business, Kevin?
Uh, there is none.
There any new business?
Nope.
There is no audience, correct, or no one out there, all right? Is there a staff report?
Uh, just really quickly, I'm on, ah, excuse me, I wanted to mention, um, well, you haven't seen her for a while. Um, Lily Wilcock, um, has been focused on our comprehensive planning efforts, but we recently promoted her to Planner Two, uh, just this effective, this last Monday. So I wanna congratulate her on, on, uh, moving up to that more, uh, senior position.
I believe congratulations be extended from the board as well.
I will, I will let her know. Thanks.
Any, anything else by way of a staff report or along those lines? Stud, you were about to say something, Kevin? No? Is there a study session?
No study session.
Then I believe, having no more business, we are adjourned. Everybody stay warm.